I would like to call to order the January eighth, two thousand twenty-four Town of McCandless Meeting of Town Council. Uh, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Intended to declare our borders with which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first order of business is the oath of office to be administered by District Justice Matthew Brongo to Councilman-elect Nicholas Giorgietti from Ward Three.
Um, all right, please raise your right hand. And repeat after me. I Nicholas Giorgietti.
I Nicholas Giorgietti.
We solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And Constitution of this common.
And Constitution of this common law.
And that I will discharge.
And that I will discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Please join us up here. It might need a signature, that's all. Uh, at this time, we have an announcement. Um, this is our section of the meeting where we deal with the announcements. Uh, just want to make note National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day is on January ninth, two thousand twenty-four. Um, are there any other announcements from council this evening? Uh, one thing I want to do here real quick before we get into our next item is just so everyone understands. Last meeting was our organizational meeting. Um, we assigned out committee chairs and liaison positions. And how that works is the town has six standing committees, Public Safety Services, Facilities, Recreation, Zoning, and Administration and Finance. And each one of those committees has a chairperson represented here on council tonight. That person is responsible for overseeing that committee as well as handling that part of the meeting. So on tonight's agenda, you'll see certain parts of the committees are run by certain council first people persons. And I will run the overall general meeting and I will hand that off to committee chairs. At the time of their meeting, they will run that section. At the end of that section, they will fall for public comment on any of those sections on the agenda. Secondary to that, there's liaison positions. All of our organizations and boards. We offer that they have a representative on council to be the liaison between that authority board and committee back to council. So those were also appointed last night. I just want to lay that out there so both council people here this evening understand how this works as well as the audience. Um, at that time, pending no other announcements from council. We will move into item number five, a public hearing on ordinance of town council, the town of McCandless, Allegheny County, Pennsylvania, amending Article one thirty-seven. Personnel Board of the Town Code of Ordinances to alter meeting procedure and qualifications for employment as a police officer and to establish specific requirements for hiring and promotion. And this time I'll turn it over to our solicitor.
Thank you very much, President Singer. At this time, I'd like to call to order the public hearing on ordinance of the Town Council, the Town of McCandless. Amending Article one thirty-seven Personnel Board of the Town Code of Ordinances to alter meeting procedures and qualifications for employment as a police officer and to establish specific requirements for hiring and promotion. Um, at this time, if there are any uh, public comments for or against the ordinance, please approach and provide your name and address for the record. Any take? Any comments or questions from Town Council? I have one uh, point of clarification that I'll need some feedback from you all, and that's with respect to on section one oh two meetings. Um, the the manner in which this was prepared um, originally was that um, there needed to be on a five-member board, there needed to be three affirmative votes to approve any motion. Except for a motion to approve the board minutes, which just had to be a majority of the board. Um, the Personnel Board revised this um, to uh, require uh, a majority vote at all times. So rather than three affirmative votes. So the 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 difference is this. Um, if there are folks that are absent from the meeting, you have a five-member board, only three are present, you have a quorum. Yeah, with a majority vote rule, two versus one would win. Um, if it's three, everybody at the meeting has to vote in the same faction. Um, so we just need some feedback from you all on that. Brian and I didn't think it was for us to really decide that issue. Um, and so so we can talk about it now. Um, you can email us your thoughts and whatever the majority is, whatever you all want to do, we're happy to 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 address that.
Question on that. Um, we have alternates on that board. Where does that position fill in when it comes to about?
If the alternates are available, they could attend the meeting.
And they can vote.
They could, yep.
There's something we want to talk. Do you want to have your, do you want to email your thoughts? Ms. Clunin, let me start at your end.
Um, I I will consider it.
Okay. I I think at this point, consider it email. It it can be done either way. Um, so email your thoughts to myself and I will make sure I forward that on to Steve and our town manager.
Any other comments or questions from council?
Is that one clarification going to prevent this from being passed at the next meeting? I shouldn't even say passed. I should have said voted on.
Consider.
My apologies.
Any other comments this evening?
Okay, with that, the uh, public hearing is closed.
Okay, uh, moving on, item number six is public comment on agenda item only. Um, so if you have a comment on any of the agenda items this evening, uh, please feel free to come forward, state your name and address. If you have a comment on non-agenda items, there will be a time permitted at the end of the meeting for that. Are there any public comment on agenda items? Moving on, uh, we need a move to approve the minutes submitted to each member of council. Uh, we'll do these independently. I need a motion uh, for the minutes for Town Council on December eighteen.
So moved.
Ms. Clunin made the motion.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Casey. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the minutes from January second organizational meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Wall. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Arlo. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to reports of committees. Uh, at this time, I'll turn over the floor to Mr. Wall for reports of public safety.
Thank you. The first we have up is staff reports, the chief's report before we get started, chief. Tomorrow is Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. I know that I speak for everybody up here when I say we really appreciate all that our police force brings to the the quality of life to the residents of the town of McCandless. You have our gratitude.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome new members of council. Congratulations to presidency, Mr. Singer. Much deserved. Uh, I'm open for any questions. You folks all have my report in front of you. Uh, as some of you have come to know, I try to lead most of my monthly reports with training of note. I think training is very important to everyone, but especially in the law enforcement world. Uh, in the month of December. Uh, training a note that you folks can see in front of you there. We had a couple officers attend some child abuse investigation training. Uh, we also had uh, implicit bias, which has been uh, a hot button topic for several years now. Every opportunity we get, I try to get some more officers trained on that. Uh, it's also become a bit of an annual mandatory training through uh, Municipal Police Officers Education and Training Commission. So um, when we get a chance to refresh, we send officers to that as well. We also had a couple officers attend drug drivers training. Uh, teaches officers how to deal with drivers impaired by something other than alcohol. We also have a drug recognition expert on staff down there in case any of you folks didn't know that. Um, there's very few of them in the state. I have one of my officers that has received all that training. We had a couple officers uh, train in vehicle crash reconstruction, specifically occupant kinematics, I believe is how you say that. Um, our officers on the North Hills SRT team and our K nine also attended their uh, monthly mandatory training. Also in December, McCandless was part of a multi-jurisdictional North Hills DUI Task Force Roving Patrol. If you folks uh, care to look, uh, the statistics are broken down there for you. In particular, of note, uh, they arrested three drivers for DUI. Performed field sobrieties on about eight and stopped one hundred and twenty-six vehicles that evening. Um, that consisted of Ross McCandless, Pine and Marshall Townships. Uh, I also attached some yearly statistics below that. Um, what the North Hills Task Force was able to accomplish in twenty twenty-three, if any of you care to look at those stats. Um, also in December, our officers continued their no-shave. Uh, where we are raising money for local families in need. December, we switched gears and helped raise it for a local teenager. Uh, suffered a a traumatic brain injury on the football field. September, uh, we raised our money in December and uh, donated that to uh, his family. Also in December, we had the food drive. Uh, we always try to support the North Hills Community Outreach with that and the generous donations of the community. They had to come and like load up um, truckloads throughout December. So thanks to the community and 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 everyone who participated in that was very successful, I think. Uh, finally, on my report here, um, we also participated in presence from police. We try to do that every year where uh, again, the community came through big time, dropped a bunch of gifts off at the police department. We made sure that they made their way to Children's Hospital and a couple other locations that are listed there. We had a stuff a police car event. Thanks to Officer Melissa Del Wall uh, over at Target in December, and I think she pulled the police car completely up, so.
That's great.
I know I talked, touched on a bunch of things there. Any questions for that or anything else, folks?
Question. Um, I was happy to see the drug driver training um, and with the incidents, I'm I'm sure more and more with people having legal access to these drugs. How is that training going to be available to all of our officers or is that becoming part of what the academy does and we're going to be catching up on it? How's that working?
You nailed it, ma'am. I believe that um, the state and you know, local municipalities, uh, probably the district attorney's office, everybody's rolling out training as we learn ourselves, you know, because it's kind of, it's a, it's a slippery slope, you say, right? You know, with marijuana and such, and you've got uh, prescription narcotics that could affect folks as well. Uh, I believe that we are grabbing as much of that training as it becomes available for us. And I know that one of our officers, actually the drug recognition expert that I mentioned uh, a moment ago. And the town of McCandless has is hosting some of that very type of training. We just have one this past summer that uh, Ingamar Volunteer Fire Department allowed us to use their facility. Did you hear, did you hear that, needles? In any case, we're grabbing what we can and trying to learn on the fly. It's just the law changes and everything.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, everybody?
Thank you, chief.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Wall, for that note beginning there about.
Fire marshals report from the month of December, two thousand twenty-three.
Good evening and Happy New Year. Um, the only thing I want to add to the report, it's just for our information purposes is um, most of you know, for the new members of council, a lot of my figures or numbers that are in my report come from Allegheny County Emergency, you know, emergency services. They're usually at least a few weeks behind, if not a month behind. So um, my goal is that uh, our meeting, first meeting in February, I will have the year-end numbers. So I will give you the annual report of everything last year. So that way you guys will all have that. Um, otherwise I'd have a pretty good night, but like I said, I I gotta wait, wait on that for that. Um, other than that, I don't have anything else to add. Uh, hopefully you guys read through my report. If anyone has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
I just wanted to congratulate you on starting the solar panel information, um, especially looking at this most recent month's permits, and I think nearly half our solar panels coming up into our community. So I want to make sure our firefighters are protected if they're responding to.
I'm glad you brought that up. So as of last week, um, uh, it took me a few weeks, but I've entered all the solar panel addresses into our pre-planned software. So unless we've got new ones, um, how the software is supposed to work is if we get a call to a specific address that the icon large should come up in the application. It should show that there is a solar panel and it'll say the roof monitor uh, on the ground or what have you, just to give them an opportunity to know that, hey, there's solar panels here. So and then we'll continue to keep keep up the date on that.
Anything else? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Building permit report from the month of December, two thousand twenty-three.
That is in your packet. If you have any questions, I will do my best to answer them.
Do. I have one question. Do you think you could make this a line charge instead? It would be a lot more meaningful.
I will talk. I I will see if it's something that.
Yeah, I I would.
Go forward.
Yeah, right. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you. Personnel Board, uh, Mr. President, we had a personnel board uh, interview meeting on Friday uh, to interview candidates for the Personnel Board. I I would like to express to the rest of council, I was not seated when they first did the interviews for the first two individuals. I was present for the last two, but since the process was started by Mr. Casey and Mr. Hart, I am going to defer to them with regards to any recommendation that would come out of those interviews, because I don't think it's fair. If, you know, I didn't get to hear everybody. Well, i- in in that vein, okay?
Yeah, yeah, and that's later on in the meeting. So but thank you for letting us know that.
Volunteer firefighter steering committee, Don Hart.
Oh, we had um, no meeting for that first period.
Thank you. McCandless Franklin Park Ambulance Authority, Jack Jackson.
I believe the information's in your package, but you'd you'd better uh, address it, Trish, because she was there and I was.
Okay.
Same questions?
I I actually was impressed with the detail of the report. Uh, and you know what? They're really making great strides. Is there any public comment on public safety? None being seen. I'll turn it back over to you.
Uh, we'll move on to reports of facilities management. Uh, Mr. Hart. He'd like to take this part of the meeting.
Okay, this is uh, facilities management. Uh, staff report, uh, Jeff's here. He'd like to, our esteemed uh, Works Director.
How are you? Congratulations to you all. Um, I just have a couple things. Uh, the Christmas tree pickup started today. That'll actually go to the nineteenth. Um, any of the mulch made from the uh, wood chips are over where the in the uh, Heritage Center parking lot. Uh, we finish up the program on the nineteenth. We'll probably have chips over there for another week following. Um, whatever we don't get used, we'll get, we'll take them away, but um, waste management will continue on the nineteenth through the twenty-sixth for any trees that come out after the nineteenth, but uh, HVAC program uh, started phase one as that end of the building. As of today, they have a we're actually, I don't want to say ahead of schedule. I want to say that, but I don't dare say that. So we're on schedule. Uh, they already have a couple of ceiling cassettes in. They start digging for the pad outside for the one condensing unit. Um, so the way the system works is when phase one is done, phase one will be active. Phase two will be the second half. Once that's done, that'll be active. Police is the third phase. Um, we're doing that all one shot. Phase four would be going back, removing all the fin tubes in the boiler system. Um, we're hoping to have all three phases up and running by mid-May. Uh, after this, if we decide we're going to move ahead with the window replacement program, we would do that right after. Um, some news about the Arlie Grant. For those of you that are new, the other grant was a grant we applied for a year and a half ago, and that was to upgrade the CPU in some of the uh, internals for a lot of the traffic signals. So we have total of thirty signals. This program will allow us to upgrade twenty-one of those signals. Um, so where we're at with that is we're ready to submit to the state for review. All the behind-the-scenes and legwork has been done. Um, drawings have been done. One thing we decided to add was uh, but they're called luminaire poles. And those are a small type of lighting by the signal itself for pedestrians. Um, this should have been turned over to the state for review about a week and a half ago, but we decided to add these for our cost, even if we don't put them in, it'd be it would be good for us to to start looking into these. Um, so I'm figuring probably within another week, it will be turned over to the state for review. The state usually takes about a week, believe it or not, to turn it over. And then at that, at that point, we'll continue with the spec and get it out for a bit. So the Greenlight Go Grant was another grant we applied for last year that we received, and that is to upgrade a total intersection upgrade of all the poles. Um, every bit of the intersection, it's a total traffic signal upgrade. Six of those were granted to us. Um, right now, we did all the legwork behind that. Now we're in the design phase. Realistically, I don't see this program starting probably until the end of the year, and that's a huge undertaking. So that's a year-long project, probably, but. Um, the last phase for the two thousand twenty-three traffic cameras, that should be done the end of this week. Ran into some weather issues, but uh, that'll close out twenty-three's traffic camera. So that's six intersections we did for twenty-three. Um, and then the camera systems for Devlin Park and our grounds around here. I'm hoping to have that done within two weeks also. So hoping. Um, I checked in with them today and they think that that's pretty realistic. So then the last thing on my report, I never did uh, tell you guys what the total was for our leaf collection. This is pretty impressive. So we picked up fi- five thousand four hundred and thirteen leaf bags. And with all the leaf trucks and everything, we picked up nine thousand six hundred and twenty-five point eight-two cubic yards of ground leaves. So just to put that in the perspective, if you had a fifty by fifty, fifty-foot by fifty-foot building, and it's a hundred and five feet tall, it would fill the entire building. That's a lot of leaves. So, all right, that's all I have. And uh, next week is uh, Bring Your Public Works People Snack Day. Right, thank you. Thanks, Jeff.
Liaison reports.
There was no, I was not at the last meeting of the Environmental Advisory Committee, but your meeting minutes are in your packet. If there are any questions, I'm happy to reach out and find out.
Uh, ad hoc uh, technology committee.
There's no meeting.
Ad hoc stormwater management committee.
There was no meeting.
A comment, public comment on uh, facilities management. Being none, I'll turn this over to Ms. Clunin.
Thank you. Uh, we'll begin the reports of the Services Committee. Uh, we'll start with liaison reports. Uh, McCandless Township Sanitary Authority, Mr. Casey.
The minutes are in your packet, and I'm happy to entertain any question.
Everyone, we go into the Northland Public Library Authority, Mr. Giorgietti.
Meeting minutes are also in your packet. If there are any questions, I'm happy to find out.
Thank you. And do we have any public comment on Services Committee? Hearing on, return it to Mr. President.
Uh, there is no old business, uh, so that will bring us to new business. We need a motion to adopt or reject the tentatively identified resolution number one of two thousand twenty-three. Um, this is basically a resolution for signatures on check dockets um, and other signatures. So I need a motion for this.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Hart, sorry. He had to stand up.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion to.
Okay, there's a motion. I need a second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Wall. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next item on the agenda is a motion to accept the resignation of Joe Wall from the Financial Development and Promotional Committee for the Heritage and Cultural Center. We need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Casey makes the motion. Mr. Arlo has accepted it. All those in favor, please say, indicate by saying aye.
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 I will abstain.
And a abstained abstention from Mr. Wall. Uh, those opposed? Motion passes. Um, item number C is appointment of ad hoc committees by council president. Um, these were some of the things we did not get to during uh, last meeting. So at the pleasure of the presidency, I have three ad hoc committees. Um, the first one will be a stormwater committee. I myself will chair it. Um, Mr. Arlo and Mr. Casey will be on it with me. They've expressed interest. Um, as being chair, I'm limiting it to three council members, therefore we don't have any issues with sunshine law. The other uh, committee uh, that I will be creating this evening is a grant writing committee. I spoke with councilperson Clunin about chairing that, and it will be her responsibility for members. That committee will stormwater, I apologize, stormwater is pretty self-explanatory. It's a committee related to stormwater issues within the town. Uh, we'll work with town residents to address problems going from there. Grant Writing Committee will be a committee um, that will help with our town administration in grants and help to assist them in that sense. The last uh, ad hoc committee I plan on creating is the Police Engagement Committee. Again, this will be chaired by councilperson Clunin. And this committee will be used to help with engagement of police in the community. At that time, that's my appointment of ad hoc committees. Moving on to item number D is the appointment of liaison and alternate liaison to the Code Appeals Board. This was one, the Code Appeals Board is a board not often used in the town. It probably gets called once every two, maybe four years. Um, there are board positions on it. Um, in the past, we have not necessarily appointed the liaison, but I feel it's important because the liaison helps to interview and pick um, board members for it. So we are going to appoint to the Code Appeals Board um, Ms. Clunin as the primary liaison and myself as the alternate liaison. After that, um, item number E, we need to have a motion for the Personnel Board.
Make that motion.
Mr. Casey, please.
Like to make a motion to appoint Matthew Shipley to the Personnel Board for the term ending twelve thirty-one twenty-six.
I'll ask for a second.
Second.
Mr. Hart is the second. Is there any discussion? Ending no discussion. All those in favors, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Uh, roll call vote. Ward one, Mr. Arlo.
Aye.
Ward two, Mr. Casey.
Aye.
Ward three, Mr. Giorgietti.
Nay.
Ward four, do we come back for, or does it matter? Ward four, aye. Ward five?
Aye.
Ward six?
Aye.
Ward seven?
Nay.
The ayes have it, five to two. Motion passes. Uh, next item on the agenda is a uh, motion for a tire changing. Do you want to tee this up a little?
I had, uh, since this uh, is over my spending approval, it is something we budgeted for. Uh, but we need a motion from the council to sign off on the purchase order. It is a tire-changing uh, piece of equipment and also a balancing machine. Our current one is older. It needed being replaced and tires. Uh, we've also started using bigger wheels and tires, so this will lead us to going outside the third-party tire-changing places as often as we do.
How much is it?
The total price is fifty thousand four eighty-nine.
In three seconds.
In three seconds.
Uh, so we need a motion. If you could read that, just so we have it in the.
Motion to approve the purchase of one Mohawk Lifts Tire-Changing and Balance Machine for the Public Works Department at a cost of fifty thousand four hundred At a cost of fifty thousand four hundred eighty-nine dollars, three cents. From Hunter Engineering Company through Sourcewell Contract zero one three zero two zero dash M R L.
Is there a second? Second by Mister Casey. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. At this time, we will open it to public non-agenda comments. Please understand you are limited to five minutes. Please approach the front and state your name and address for the record. If there are any non-agenda items. Be spoken. Yes, sir. Please come, state your name and address, please.
My name is Harold Dixler. And I live at eight forty-nine North Lincoln Avenue in Pittsburgh. I own property one one zero zero. Woodland Road. In McCandless. Through my LLC, Holly Pittsburgh Properties, I am the owner of the one one zero zero Woodland Road property. I live in a historic neighborhood called Allegheny West, and I've been there for forty-five years. My property has been totally restored and is usually on tour. For Christmas, most years. It was built in eighteen seventy. My LLC has worked on properties in the eastern part of Allegheny County, mostly Penn Hills and Wilkensburg and Churchill. Just recently, my LLC sold a property at seventeen forty-two Williamsburg Place. Having worked on it for several years, this property had been pretty derelict. I have worked on other properties also in the in the. Penn Hills Churchill area, mostly to deal with the properties for my family. Twenty-one forty Royal Avenue, Wilkinsburg, twenty-one fourteen Lindsay Road, Wilkinsburg, seventy oh five Georgetown Place, Churchill. Fifteen sixteen Grand Boulevard, Wilkinsburg, and thirteen oh seven Grand Boulevard, Wilkinsburg. Most of these properties had needed major repairs and renovations to be viable, which have been done. Most of these were for my relatives, my sister, niece, nephews, etc. What I'd like to accomplish for the property on Woodland Road is a total renovation. Replacing interior walls, plumbing, electrical, and HVAC. I would like it to at least be as nice and as liberal as the neighbor next door, which is a mirror image of this property. I, the, the, the brick building of the property. I would hope to have it ready for occupancy. If I'm allowed to do this and for sale with one, within one and a half years. In other words, probably for not this summer, but the following summer. I have. I have. Called a professional engineer Bernard Lamb of Common Ground to look at the property. And even in extreme rundown condition, he has presented a three-page report, frankly, pointing out its problems and challenges. The bottom line that he felt that the building is still very solid and no imminent danger of collapse. The supports and floors are solid, would need a minor reinforcement, and the outside masonry is also in decent condition. Of course, the roofing, interior mechanicals and walls are totally a good replacement. But you will hear from Mister Lamb, he believes a solid viable home can be constructed on the, on the site within the brick framer. I will, I will want the opto do to do this. If only the town of McCandless would be seeing the order to tear it down. And to level it. Property can be brought back to a residence of great value to the neighborhood. Allowing a new neighborhood neighbor to enjoy the lovely woodland road surrounding it. This is a lovely road. Of course, this also means paying appropriate taxes for a first-class residential structure. Instead of a minimal tax of a land that has been leveled. I've had experience doing this. I've lived in my property, which was solely rehab since nineteen seventy-eight. So I, I. I had. Just recently, and it's only three weeks, purchased the property from Mister Tessitore. And I know there are many, many problems on the property and problems with Mister Tessitore. I am not hate. I have financial backing. I have. Good credit. And I have a reputation. I've been going to a church in McCandless Township for the last forty years. So people know me. So. I would also be willing to post a bond, a performance bond, if you feel that's necessary. What I don't want to happen is the property be torn down tomorrow. My lawyer, my solicitor, Mister Mergo. Is in the process of trying to get that done, but it may not be in time. So I'm just asking council to consider putting just a small. Stay on that for, for a week until it's adjudicated in the Commonwealth Court. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Are there any other public comments this evening? Please state your name and address. Coming forward.
Hi, my name, excuse me, hi, my name's Bernard Lamb. I live at ten five hundred, hundred Old Babcock Boulevard. That is actually not in McCandless. My, yes. My mailbox is, but the house is not.
Are you here in regards to the previous?
Yeah, yeah, I'm here in regard to the previous. Just wanted to let anyone know if anyone has any questions. There is a report that we've, we've done on, on the facility. It's, you know, beautiful structure. You know, we've seen a lot, lot, a lot worse. Structures in and around the Pittsburgh area that had been able to be rehabbed and renovated. And, you know, I, I think this is a great opportunity to, to finally get some occupancy in that structure. And, 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 you know, restore it to, to its original or better condition. And. Ha- happy to discuss this with, with anybody, you know. Within the Public Works Department or the Building Inspector's Department or anything else, if that would help.
Thank you for your comments. We appreciate it. Any other comments this evening? Name and address, please.
My name's Paul Gross. I live at ten forty Woodland Road. I am Mister Dixler's neighbor. I would say that this house has been in some stage of disrepair. For three plus decades. There's been little to any progress. Mister Dixler and Mister Tessitore know each other very well. They serve on. Organizations together. The sale seems spurious at best. And I suppose that if you allow them. This opportunity to extend it for another three decades, I guess I wouldn't be terribly surprised.
That's it. Thank you for your comments, sir. Any other public comment this evening? One of these got to come back. Go ahead, ma'am, please. Name and address, please, for the record.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Julie Greenberg, and I live at one thousand Woodland Road. I've lived on, in the Woodland Road neighborhood since nineteen ninety-nine with my family, and at no time in the last twenty-five years has the property at eleven hundred Woodland Road been occupied or maintained. I urge you to reject the request.
Could you speak a little closer?
I urge you to reject the request to rescind the demolition order for eleven hundred Woodland Road. The demolition order runs with the deed of the property. Holly, Holly Pittsburgh Properties or HPP would have known that they purchased the property subject to the demolition order. It was, would have been a required disclosure as part of the real estate transaction. And there, there is no reason to rescind that here. As Mister Gross indicated, Mister Dixler and Mister Tessitore have a pre-existing relationship. I don't know exactly the nature of the relationship between Mister Tessitore, Mister Lamb and HPP. But the township should be extremely wary that these are not arms-length transactions that occurred in late December related to this property. And I would urge you to exercise extreme caution and skepticism when considering the request to, to rescind the demolition order. This is nothing more than a thinly veiled attempt to simply delay the demolition of this property. Even if we look, overlook the suspect circumstances here with the sale of the property. Presume that all of these parties have standing to seek rescission of the order. The township has not been presented with sufficient information and assurances that HPP has the ready cash to properly rehabilitate the home, the shed, the shared garage and the land. They presented no evidence of a well-founded cost estimate to complete the work. They have no contract with an architect, no scope of work. No timeline for work to begin or be completed that is demonstrable here. No building permits and no planned date of occupancy. In short, they have no plan to give our neighborhood any confidence that this is anything other than a sham of an attempt to further drag out Mister Tessitore's personal agenda. In fact, as you saw just a few moments ago, Mister Tessitore, who's in the room this evening, walked up and prompted Mister Lamb to come up and speak to you at the podium. He, he is behind whatever shady situation is going on here, and we should not look lightly at that. Nothing that has been said here this evening by either Mister Dixler or Mister Lamb offers any confidence that a year from now, we won't still be living on a street with a dilapidated, roofless, unsafe structure that's now completely open to passerby's. Who might be curious about the interior of the home, animals and other weather intrusion. Left untouched, the condition of the property will only continue to degrade. If Mister Tessitore and HPP and Mister Lamb were serious about rehabilitating this property for occupancy. They'd be here tonight presenting a detailed, aggressive plan of work with contracts in place that would have the work completed in no more than six months. They would be offering significant financial assurances to the township. I, I know that Mister Dixler just mentioned he might be willing to post a bond. That, that the township, if, if the township were to, for some reason, consider this. That bond should be significant and at least two, two to three times the cost of the demolition and the cost to restore the land to the natural state. They would also be offering to enter into an agreement with the township. That if the work is not completed timely and in its entirety, that the township could reinstate the demolition order without having to incur the time and the expense of the lengthy process of hearings and appeals that have been going on here for decades to bring us to where we are today. HPP is not offering any of this. Instead, they're here empty-handed with nothing but empty hand, empty promises. This is not a historic property in the legal sense. It was built in nineteen thirty. There are numerous other homes on the street that are of similar age or older. Nothing about the property meets the requirements to be nominated to the National Register of Historic Buildings. And it's not eligible for City of Pittsburgh historic designation because it's in McCandless, not the City of Pittsburgh. Additionally, no steps have been taken at any time by Mister Tessitore, Mister Dixler, or HPP to seek such a nomination. It is an extremely lengthy process in my experience. Eleven hundred Woodland Road is nod of architectural, cultural, engineering, or economic significance to the township, the state, or the country. We aren't talking about a George Washington slept here situation. The home was not secretly designed and built by Frank Lloyd Wright. It is just an old rundown building that Mister Tessitore grew up in. It has no roof, no utilities, no windows, missing soffit and fascia boards, an unsealed hole from a chimney that was removed several years ago. And a collapsing front porch.
Sorry, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other comments this evening? Your name and address, sir?
Yes, my name is David Tessitore, formerly owner of eleven hundred Woodland Road. Address one twenty Oakville Drive, apartment one A, one five, two two zero. And to, to address the, the comments that are there. If I would stop, start with Mister Gross's comments. I know that repeatedly he has said to me he had no problem with the, the condition of the house, that whatever he was really concerned about was the garden, or the garage, rather. So, as to that. Just a couple, few quick points there as far as the historic nature of it. The house was built in nineteen thirteen, which actually precedes the construction of the House of Thousand Woodland Road. It was built by one Charles Thomas. Charlie Thomas was a township commissioner here, and the person who put through in Gamar Road with the bulldozers. He lived in the one house and his parents lived in the other. So there is some historical timing on that, that the nineteen thirty listing on that is a sloppy thing from the county. And that has, I've tried for years to get it corrected, but the original deeds show otherwise. This, I, I, I don't wish to say that I. Have taken, haven't taken long because I have taken a long time at working on it. This last time, since the death of Jeffrey Frazier. Nobody had said anything to me about code issues or anything while he was alive. We were working back and forth. He realized that it was taking a while. The judge at the last hearing that we'd had downtown. Even realized that reduced the fines to ten dollars apiece. So. Yes, that has been the case. I'm no longer there as the owner. Mister Dixler has, again, willing to put a, a performance bond. I imagine the amount that she suggested wouldn't be unreasonable. The thing is that if it goes through with the demolition. I still have some issues in that. Not being notified to remove the materials from the building because there was a date of something starting. I did not. The town authorized the removal of all the lumber, which was neatly stacked in the back to repair the garage and the house. That was taken. All of my tools inside thousands of dollars with the power tools and everything to be used and then the work was taken. So there are some issues there that would end up in litigation. I think that, you know, to avoid litigation, extending it for two more weeks until council has more chance to get more information. And so that the buyer, Mister Dixler, has an opportunity to bring in his architect, which he's consulted. Is Estasis, which is the firm that did the reconstruction of, and the restoration of, of the Zillian Opal Business District, if anybody's driven through there. They are willing to put together the plans and everything that are necessary for this. And it takes a few days to come up with the contractors. We've had a review by one went through. I showed him. Because I was familiar with the property, I have been there to show him. Is Mister Dixler's property. And I think you could find it. He does have the financial wherewithal, if you would request that. I know that he's sold several properties recently and does have the finances with that. So. All that's being asked is that it not move so quickly that it ends up where you're going to be in litigation. You will have potentially some liabilities that merely delaying the action for another two weeks until council has a chance to come back to this. Being on the agenda, the new owner has an opportunity to put forward a full plan in front of you. And the engineers and the others can have attempts to be interviewed and testify. That's all that's being requested. It's not extended forever. It's not thirty-five years or anything like that. It's simply the reasonable amount of time for a capable purchaser who is willing and able to restore the property and have it back on your tax rolls at a good rate. That's all there is to it, nothing less than that. It's not asking for everything to be waived, even just wait until two more weeks. And, and the issues have a chance to, to. Feather out and, and fill in, so you can all make a reasonable decision. That isn't being punitive. I understand people coming after me. But doing so punitively is not going to help the town.
Out of time. Thank you, sir, for your comments. Are there any other comments this evening? Please state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Russ Griffiths. I live at ninety-eight twelve Woodland Road North. Same neighborhood that David Tessitore has his house. I pass that house ten to twenty times a day. Doing my thing in McCandless. My property is a larger parcel in the neighborhood and worth considerable. I have approached Mister Tessitore on several occasions because I do have the investors. That's what I do. I rehab houses in Allegheny West. Like Mister Dixler has stated, in Manchester. I do understand the process. And whether or not Woodland Road community is a historical landmark is really irrelevant here. That property. Has so much potential. It is not a condemnation in the sense that you have an engineer here stating that the property is good. Maybe the township states that it's not. I don't know. I think that's for a court to decide. Not a township. Meeting or anybody at this level. Because property ownership in this country is one of the most important things. And far be it for any one of us to tell a property owner what they have to do to appease neighbors in the neighborhood. All I do know is that. All I do know is that restoring this property will give property value to everyone around it. And if you think this property is taking away from the value of the community, it's not. It's a scratch on a scratch. There are too many. Uh. Political reasons why our property values have uh fallen, but I do know that Western PA is one of the top five marks in this country. Maybe in the world for that matter. And there are very definitive reasons why that is so. Our technology corridor. Our healthcare is second to none. And everybody in Western PA takes that for granted. But if you get sick anywhere in the world, where do you want to be? You want to be here. So I do know that I've come across a lot of properties that I rehab myself. And they pale in comparison to Mr. Tessitore's property. It makes his property look like the Taj Mahal. But I see how these properties are dealt with. If Mr. Tessitore has an individual that bought his property. And he's asking for a few more weeks. What's the harm in giving that to? Township already stated their. Stance on this. They think the property is condemned. Well. Apparently, there's information that says it's not. I understand the frustration of neighbors in the neighborhood, including myself. But if he's got a plan in motion, let him follow through with it because what's gonna happen is if you tear that property down. Maybe people have the misconception that they're gonna swoop in and divide it up and do what they want with it. That's not what happens. It opens the township up for liabilities. For real estate law. But it also opens the neighbors up for liabilities and a nightmare in the future. Trying to think that this is going to raise their property values when the supply and demand, which is a major factor in that. Franklin Park happens to be one of the fastest selling areas in this state. McCandless borders it. This is a wonderful neighborhood, very desirable place for people to live. So I say give him a chance. Let him restore the property. It's beautiful. It is not buildable if you tear it down. And you're gonna be in a legal nightmare trying to divvy up the property or have someone do with it. Do something with it. Instead of citing them for not cutting the grass or making it look like crap to the left and right. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments this evening? Uh at this time, then I need a motion to adjourn. Yep. Uh before we have a motion to adjourn, I will point out we are re- having an executive session after the meeting uh. Discuss. Discuss litigation issues. Uh there will be no other. Business after that. So at this time, I need a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Casey, is there a second? Mr. Wall, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.